The December 1st Planning Board meeting to order. As soon as they're all elevated, Paul, would you read the COVID instructions, please? Okay, Paul?
In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the December 1st 2020 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to Planning Board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting, send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Zoom login instructions. Instructions in the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address: www.falmouthmass.us/1112/planningboard. Two, please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access the meeting. Number three, additionally, public comments may be sent in advance to the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made part of the meeting record, may be read into the record, summarized or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Four, applicants, representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting. Planning@falmouthma.gov that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you, Paul. Tonight's public hearing is a continuation of the zoning bylaw recodification spring 2021 town meeting article. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by repealing the existing Chapter 240 zoning and adopting the recodified zoning bylaw as shown in a document on file with the town clerk, planning office, and at Falmouth Public Library entitled," in quotes, "Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, zoning bylaw, Town Code, Chapter 240, Articles 1 through 14, dated November 2020," end quotes, containing a table of contents and 149 pages of the recodified bylaw dated September 2020." And when I spoke with Tom earlier today, we decided that because there may be some misunderstanding as to what we can and cannot do under this contract with the two Bobs, Tom is going to give a summary of what we were doing with the recodification. So, Tom, and take yourself off mute, please.
Yes, ma'am. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair. We do have in it with us three guests who are much esteemed in this matter. Town Council Frank Duffy, Bob Mitchell, FAICP, that is the Fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and Attorney Bob Ritchie, who's working with Bob, we call them the Bobs, who was an attorney formerly with the AG's office. So, we've got a pretty good team, understanding what we're doing and what we're anticipating. So, the whole idea, and Bob's feel free to correct me if I got off the rails here, with the recodification, is to essentially renumber, reorganize, and clarify some of the language in the zoning bylaw, eliminate the things that are patently illegal or have been changed by court cases, and eliminate some of the things in the bylaw that are no longer necessary, such as some moratoriums, some definitions, things that don't comply with the bylaw to date. So, we have sent out, as Frank, to some attorneys in the community, as well as to folks in the development community as well, and builders, and we have received some comments back. To date, we received comments from attorneys Bob Oment, Laura Moynihan, and Ed Kirk, all who have been before the Board in the past, at least since I've been here, I'm sure there are others, and we'll touch a bit on their comments as well. Bob Oment did say he was hoping to put together some additional comments. He has been working on this as a side gig with his very busy practice. So, we appreciate those comments, as well as Laura Moynihan, who went through the bylaw and had comments in some hundred-ish places, I'm gonna say. Michaela has been curating those, and we'll talk about those briefly. So, that's where we're at presently. I did want to give the floor to the Bobs to make sure I didn't go astray there, and then we can talk about some of those comments that we did receive that have been shared, both with the Planning Board, as well as with our consultants and with Town Council.
Okay. Bob Mitchell, Bob Ritchie, any comments on Tom or additional comments that you wish to make? Remember, you both are on mute. So, you've got to, Bob Ritchie is on mute.
I unmuted.
Thank you. Who wishes to say anything? Which Bob?
I will just say, for the audience's information, if you weren't on the first public hearing Zoom meeting, just that this is a Phase 1 of a multi-phase effort to bring the Falmouth zoning bylaw into some, I would say, rational organization and bring it up to date, correct a lot of language problems, and organize it in a manner that will carry it forward to many years. And so, it is not a rewriting of the entire bylaw. It is reorganizing, reformatting, correcting, and many of the more substantive topics that came up during meetings with the working group and staff are on a Phase 2 list, which you can find on the website, and that will be something that the Planning Board will tackle after the completion of Phase 1. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Frank, you have anything you wish to add to this?
Okay. Well, I, as Tom said, we did send copies of the recodified bylaw out to the various constituencies in Falmouth who use it on a regular basis and solicited comments. I have seen comments from Laura Moynihan. I've seen comments from Ed Kirk, and I saw the original comment from Bob Oment, but I, if there's another one, I didn't see the second one. But I appreciate all the work they did. Both Laura and Ed, I know, did pretty carefully review what we sent them, so we do appreciate their effort, and I'm sure Bob is doing the same thing. One of the things, I think we should definitely, the staff at the Planning Board should definitely get in touch with them and thank them for submitting these comments, and assure them that we will follow up with some of their concerns. Now, as Bob Mitchell has alluded, I think some of the concerns that they noticed and they commented to us were really Phase 2 work. And I have seen the list of Phase 2 items, which Bob and Bob prepared, and many of the comments are already on the Phase 2 list. So, I think we should make everybody feel comfortable, let their comments have been read, they've been understood, and they are on the, will be addressed at the appropriate time.
This is Bob, this is Bob Ritchie.
Yes, Bob.
The Phase 2 list is a good starter list, but between now and the time Phase 2 begins, all of those things about Phase 1 that leave us a little bit uncertain that we may want to kind of take a look at what we've done, a sort of a retrospective as an ancillary consideration in the Phase 2.
I have read over Ed Kirk's comments. I have gone over probably half of Laura Moynihan's comments, and of course, I read Bob Oment's comments. I personally appreciate the amount of time that they are putting into this review, and I know that both Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie are looking at their comments very seriously and seeing which can be added in under the contract that they're currently working under, any corrections that they might be making. So, they are very carefully looking at that. And I really do personally want to thank those attorneys, those three attorneys, who so far have done an extraordinary amount of work in reviewing these documents. Pam, did you want to say something?
No, I agree. It's a lot of work, and it's tedious work, and thank you to everyone who took the time to read through.
Yeah, and Charlotte and I know and can only imagine what the two Bobs went through. It's eye crossing after you go through it so many times, too.
I can recite it in my sleep.
Pardon?
I can recite it in my sleep sometimes.
Yeah, I'll bet you can, Bob.
Pat?
Yes, Charlotte.
I wonder if I could ask a question of Tom, just for the benefit of the public who have actually turned in, tuned in for our public hearing tonight. From the comments from the three attorneys who are, who appear before us so regularly, who are so familiar with our current bylaws, did any of their comments indicate that we have made major errors? Our effort was to go through, to recodify, but not change the bylaws, because changing the bylaws requires a town meeting vote. And I wonder if there was anything in the comments from our knowledgeable people that we had inadvertently changed a bylaw?
I'm gonna get into their comments without going through Laura's 180 pages of comments, but the recodification or any changes to the bylaw require a town vote, so in one word. Yes, absolutely. Well, so, if I may, at this point, I'd like to just touch base on the basis of the, sort of the cover letters, if you will, for both Laura Moynihan's comments and Ed Kirk's comments, for the record. We received them prior to the Planning Board meeting. So, I'll start with Laura Moynihan, who says, "Many of my comments are form comments or definitions or section reference related. However, I do see a few significant general changes which are noted in the text of the document attached. One, changes in the business district rendering properties non-conforming, period. I'm not sure if this was intended or not, but it appears to mean that many properties become non-conforming. Two, the addition of restrictions on subdivision developments at 20 lots and building permit issue, which I believe is too restrictive, and I am not sure why necessary or how supported, will impact affordable housing efforts as new waivers will be needed. Three, absence or clarification of home occupation in home-based businesses." These are two different uses, and this may be an opportunity to clarify this in the revised bylaw to address the existing provisions. Four, dwelling definitions are inconsistent, the use of semi-detached, three-family, multifamily references to four units, but defined as three units, et cetera. Comment five, non-conforming structures and use section. I see some inconsistencies and repeats here and found some of these sections confusing. Six, accessory apartment provisions seem confusing. It appears that there are references to ZBA as the permit authority, but then reference the Planning Board and the ZBA separately. Seven, conversion of dwelling unit section, changing it to a lot instead of reference to the dwelling. Eight, marine district limitations on other uses. Eight, CPOD deletion of recharge areas. 10, land clearing limitations on solar installations. If you have any questions that require further clarification, let me know. And as I said, Laura did send us back, essentially, I'm looking at 190 pages of the bylaw, with her comments through it. And as we talked about before, some of these are items that are in the existing bylaw that weren't the subject of recodification, but rather clarifications in some of the things we've got that have been in the bylaw for some time. And if I misspoke on any of that characterization of some of those brief comments, either the Bobs may correct me on that.
Okay, I gather you're not going to be corrected, Tom.
Very well. So, let me talk a bit, a little about Ed Kirk's comments. And I love Ed, and I love Thoreau. He starts off, "The objective of good legislation is to speak clearly as possible, following the direction of Henry David Thoreau, to simplify, simplify, simplify. In that sphere, I humbly offer the following comments and questions and opinions." And as sort of mundane as some of these topics are, there are actually some things that were actually had a fair amount of discussion in the working group, such as 240-11A, "The statement of intent seems unnecessary. In purpose, provision of adequate light air, light and air intentionally omitted." Interestingly, that adequate light and air dates to a lot of zoning bylaws, because it sort of showed up in the original in 2000, in, pardon me, 1916, from Jacob Rees's book, How the Other Half Lives, published in 1888. So, adequate light and air has been in bylaw since 2000, or since 1916. In Section 242-2A, "The powers of the Planning Board do not come from the zoning bylaw. They are in the general bylaws." 242.2.3B, "Does the appointment of the zoning administrator to perform some of its powers, quote, 'require concurrence of all, but one of the board assembled on one occasion,' or does it also require the vote of those not assigned or sitting at a particular time? Do those powers have to be specified at the time of the vote?" 243-1, "If the definition section, if the definitions are clearly expressed, it is asking for trouble to be adding guidelines for interpreting or applying those definitions. I would think it would be better to keep the definitions in alphabetical order as they are now, rather than breaking down into categories to which they may be apt to be related. The reader can figure out when necessary." That was also the subject of a substantial discussion in our working groups. 2 dot 3 bot, 240 dash 3.3, "The new section on abandonment seems confusing, unclear, and will prove problematic, also possibly conflicting with the later section 240-10. Farming. Must each of these activities A through J be performed on a parcel of land at least five acres? Does carrying any one of these activities A through J make one a farmer? Or are some of the defined activities allowed as accessory to a farm? The interrelated concepts of agriculture, farming, farm, and farm-related business require more clarity in order to know what intended to be allowed." Lot, colon, "This is one of the most basic terms of all zoning. What is the intention of adding new language to this existing definition of..." "Non-conforming use, building, structure, and lot, also a subject of quite a bit of discussion. Again, one of the most basic and at the same time difficult areas of zoning. Question A, the advisability of lumping non-conforming lots in with uses, buildings, and structures. And B, scope of the definition made applicable to all those terms." 240 dash 6, "The concept of a table of uses" is a good one. Thank you, Ed. It was Bob and Bob's idea. Thank you, Bob and Bob. 240-10 dash IA, "The preamble and overview are unnecessary, and the semi-definition is misleading." 240-10.1B, "Unnecessary, confusing, and possibly misleading. There are no provisions in GL Chapter 40A, Section 6, which are designated as preemptive. This language attempts to categorize what someone thinks the statute says and make it a substantive part of the bylaw." 240 dash 10 dot 1D, "One, unnecessary and confusing. Two, turns the criteria of chuckerin and powers upside down or backward. That criteria is used to determine whether there's been a change in use. It is only when that determination has been made does the Board begin the consideration of detriment." 240 dash 10 to B, "Why can't the town allow a non-conforming residential structure to be expanded by special permit if it will be substantially more detrimental? A variance should not be required." 240 dash 10.3, "Unnecessary and confusing. Missing statute of limitations issues with other concepts of extending uses and structures. Paragraph 2 is particularly difficult mixing structures and uses." And headed to the big finish here. 240 dash 10 dot 5, "Confusing and possible conflict with earlier definition of abandonment. Can you explain or alter the previous abandoned non-conforming use? Seems to run contrary to the legislative intent of the statute to eliminate non-conforming, non-residential uses from residential neighborhoods." Conclusion, I'm sure that many thoughtful hours were spent on this project, and I have not been able to study all the proposed changes, but I believe that the proposed changes commented on will create problems. So, that is the extent of Attorney Kirk's comments. In earlier conversations today, talking about our next steps coming from this, the comments that we've received and the comments that we will get in have been forwarded to the Planning Board. They've been forwarded to the Bobs and to Town Council. And over the next few weeks, they will be reviewing those and looking to see which of those comments fit into the mission of recodification, and which are just sort of peculiar to our bylaw that we've had here. So, once again, much like some of the other comments, not everything is a Phase 1 comment. Some things are Phase 2 comments, but we do appreciate the work that people have taken to look at these things and point out things that we, while we poured over this for hours and hours and days and days, may not have seen. So, the discussion that we had earlier today with Matt Kerfoot, the Chair, and Bob Mitchell, was about bringing all these edits together, perhaps convening the working group again in December, and to bring these things back to the Planning Board at a continued hearing likely on January 5th. So, we are well before closing of the warrant. We don't have a schedule yet for when the warrant will be closed. That is typically the third week of January. So, we've looked at those dates historically in the past, and so that is our target date to have our next continued hearing prior to the close of the warrant, because at that point, we'll have the final draft that we'll be looking at, for the most part, as well as the time to submit fully any warrant articles to the Board of Selectmen prior to the close of the warrant. And with that, I will mute myself and let you folks chat.
So, what we're proposing is, as we normally will clear, we will close the hearing when we're looking at the zoning bylaws. Because this is so complex, and we want to get as many comments in as we can to clarify any issues before it goes before town meeting, we're planning to keep this public hearing open. And as Tom mentioned, the working group will be meeting also to try to go over issues that have been brought up. So, with that, yes, Jim?
I'm just wondering, are we gonna read all the other attorneys' comments verbatim like we did Attorney Kirk? Because I don't think these were even shared with the working group. I have not, these weren't sent to me, but these were chosen to present at a board meeting tonight, for whatever reason. But what about all the other attorneys' comments? Are we gonna treat them equally, or is this only Ed Kirk?
Well, they were sent to you today.
What time?
By email.
I read all my emails. You're supposed to have it more than three hours before the meeting.
Oh, so, if I may?
Yes, Tom.
We've not read all their comments. We've essentially read the cover letter to their comments. As I said, Laura has 180 pages of comments in there, but for the record, I wanted to make sure that there was clear, you know, to whom was making comments in the general nature of those.
I suggest if we do it at a public meeting, we should get them more than a few hours before the meeting, because I work full-time, and I did not have time to review this. This is all new, and it's being dropped to me right now.
I know. We're all, we're hearing this at a hearing. You have to think about that.
When did they come in?
Today, I think. Tom? Laura's, I think, came in, and they were sent to you last Wednesday, I believe, before Thanksgiving.
Give me just a minute. Give me just a couple minutes, and I'll check for you.
Okay. But I believe they were, I believe Laura's comments were forwarded last Wednesday, and Ed Kirk's were forwarded today. They came in today.
We would normally not let anyone bring them in the same day. That's an unusual circumstance.
Good for hearing. Paul?
Yeah, I just have a comment. We got information from three attorneys in town.
Right.
Comments from any town departments or contractors, or anyone else in town, similar to what we received from the three attorneys?
I have not received any, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely none. I wish they would. And I hope we will see some, too. Okay? Charlotte?
Following up on what Jim said, I've just looked at my mail while we were talking to see what did I miss. I don't seem to have anything with attachments that would have conveyed the comments, nor did I get the comments from Bob Oment. And I'm really, having worked on the working group, I'm really interested in what the comments are. And my chief curiosity is, I understand that we're not going to go through them all now. You can't possibly absorb more than one or two before. It's just too many. So, it's, I'm not asking you to do that. It's just, I just, as an initial inquiry, are any actually substantive? And they seem very, what I was listening to sounded picky on, would somebody who has actually seen them be willing to characterize them at this point, or do you two need more time?
Well, I think, as we talked about, a large number of the comments are Phase 2 in clarifying language and things that are in our bylaw that have been, you know, confusing for some time.
So, Tom, for the public who may have forgotten what Phase 2 is, Phase 2 is to change the bylaws, to make a new bylaw, to get rid of things they don't particularly like in the bylaw, which, we're putting that off, because now all we're doing is recodifying the bylaws we have. I don't think everyone gets the nomenclature of Phase 1, Phase 2.
Yeah, to use a bad analogy, the recodification is essentially rearranging the deck chairs. You know, plugging the holes in the ship is sort of Phase 2, if I can go there. So, just looking back briefly, Laura's comments came in Monday, the 23rd, and were forwarded to the Board on Wednesday, the 25th, at 3:07 PM. I can send them again if you'd like. So, that was Wednesday we received those. And I'm looking for Ed Kirk's, but I believe we got Ed's in toward, around the holiday. So, I'll look for those. But I know that Laura's have been in for a while and forwarded to the Bobs and to the Board.
Well, no, Ed Kirk's is dated November 29th, Tom.
Okay.
So, that probably would have meant that it came in, he sent it on Sunday or yesterday. Charlotte? Charlotte?
Okay, so I'm looking now at email I received on the twenty-fifth and I did not receive email from the town or the planning board on that day. So I'm, I'm requesting that you resend the comments of all three attorneys. That would be very helpful to me.
Me too.
I haven't received anything either.
Yeah, we'll do Laura's. Go ahead.
No, I didn't either.
Yeah, so Laura's was a three megabyte attachment that usually goes through most people's emails, but we'll send them again for you.
Thank you.
I know I received them, so I don't know why others haven't.
So I'll be, I'll be sending them all out tonight. If you wake up in the morning and there's not something in your inbox, give me a call and we'll get them to you.
Thanks.
And I'll delete them because they'll clutter, Tom, since I already have them. So, all right, thank you. I'm glad that you have spoken up that you didn't receive them. I wonder why? What the difficulty was. Paul?
Yeah, do we have a schedule for where we go from here now on the next several meetings?
Oh, well, our next meeting is December eighth and that's a regular meeting.
No, I mean with the recodification.
We do not at this point, do we, Ed, Tom?
Yes, I, I'm suggesting that this evening we continue hearing until January fifth. That was an opportunity for the Bobs to spend another holiday at their dining room tables, working through these things. We appreciate that. So January fifth would be that continued hearing to allow those additional comments to come in. Things to be sort of vetted by staff and by the consultants and continue the hearing on January fifth. As I said, we were talking today, we haven't sent this out yet about reconvening the working group in mid-December to look at some of these products as well. And then our January fifth hearing, we would finalize those, that, that draft. We would submit to the selectmen the warrant articles and likely keep town, the hearing open after that because under Massachusetts general law, Chapter forty A, Section five, I think it is, your hearing is good for six months from the date you close the hearing. You have to bring those zoning articles to town meeting within six months. Now, we just finished our April of town meeting in what, September or November? October, I think, sorry, exaggerated. So the fact that we might not kick off town meeting when we anticipate kicking off town meeting. I don't want us to have a hearing closed in January, get to town meeting on July third to find out that the, the clock has expired on our hearing. So we would be keeping the hearings open as a procedural matter through spring in order to make sure that we convene town meeting prior to the hearing being closed. That's my recommendation.
Charlotte?
Um, this is our second public hearing on recodification, which is, in one sense, a very simple kind of a thing, just reorganizing something we already have. But because it is such a huge document with so many detailed provisions, it becomes a very complicated thing. We're relying on town meeting to give it an approval. So what we now regard as a tremendous improvement in, in from, in a communication document, they're not getting a chance to see it in a regular hearing. Watching the participants in our two meetings, we haven't had town meeting members tuning in. And I am wondering if we should give some thought to means of, of during the pandemic of attracting and holding their attention for long enough to feel comfortable with what we've done. I mean ordinarily, in, I don't know about ordinarily, but a document this big and complex, you wind up really, the people who are at a distance from it, relying on testimonials of people that you trust saying, oh, yeah, they did the job. We think it's good. It's good to go. This is an improvement. And that would be a general characterizing statement from people who are really familiar with it. Maybe we could seek some of those from trusted individuals. I, I know that they, I'm sure they all trust us, but people aside from the planning board who are users of this who haven't been so close to it, it might be helpful.
Tom?
Just regarding reaching out to town meeting members, I know Charlotte, you received the town meeting emails. So we have forwarded emails to town meeting members prior to the November twenty-fourth hearing, as well as the December one hearing. The email they got just before Thanksgiving, I think it went out Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, had the link to the previous meeting. It had, so they could review what was discussed at the meeting and it had the two links to both the bold, the, the track changes bylaw and the clean copy of the bylaw, as well as the PowerPoint presentation, which is sort of a brief synopsis of the program we've been through. So following this meeting, town meeting members will get another email with a link to this meeting as well and provide them, once again, that opportunity to review the documents at their leisure. And that's really about as good as we can get to try to get information out to people who, who may be, you know, busy or for whatever reason, don't come to meetings. We, you know, typically you see more people at a meeting if you're building something next to my house than you do for talking about broad policy implications, no matter how much, how, how many people could be affected by it. You just don't see people coming out to, to meetings like this. So we do our best to make it easy to bring the meeting to them with the correspondence we've been sending out.
Charlotte?
I, I think, really just to use a little fishing analogy here, I think that we have baited our hook and dangled the hook correctly so that there was the opportunity for town meeting members to, to know what we're doing, to look into it, to show an interest, but we haven't managed to catch anybody yet. I'm just trying to think of a, of a different way to reach them rather than repeating something that hasn't worked so far. I think we need to go forward with the public hearings. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. We should just maybe when the working group convenes, one of our topics could be, how can we reassure people that we have succeeded in our effort enough so that we're going to get a positive vote on this? It would be a shame, after all this time and work and effort, to have the recodification be turned down.
One thing that we do not know is how many town meeting members may be watching our meeting on TV.
Right.
We have no way of knowing that and hopefully they're learning from that. Hopefully they're taking the opportunity to look through what has been sent them, the links of what has been sent them. You know, there's that old saying, you can lead a horse to water, can't make him drink. And we have been doing our best to lead them to the water. Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Attorney Kirk if he saw anything positive in the report. And maybe we should read that into the record instead of what I've just heard is just totally blowing it away.
Mr. Kirk's conclusion was, I am sure many thoughtful hours were spent on this project and I have not been able to study all the proposed changes, but I believe the proposed changes commented will create problems. So many thoughtful hours.
The, the attorneys are necessarily, Jim, focusing on the things that might create problems.
I understand, but the way this was presented by Tom was just totally negative.
No, it wasn't. It does not do any good to have us patted on the back.
No, I didn't mean to be patted on the back. I did not hear a positive comment, period.
That's not what these comments are meant for and I don't want to argue with you.
Okay, I won't then. That's what I heard.
These are informative to Bob Ritchie and to Bob Mitchell when they look at it and to Frank Duffy when they look at, at all of this for what needs to potentially be changed and what should go into phase two. Bob, did you want, Bob Mitchell, did you want to say something? It looked like you did, but you have to take mute off.
Um, just a, a broad comment, Jim. Having done this kind of project in many cities and towns in many states, what you heard is pretty much what you're going to hear when you send it out for review. You, people review what they think needs to be changed or corrected or fixed or whatnot. And while some of them will say, wow, this is pretty amazing and you know, it's a much better bylaw than the existing one or it's better organized. And I think if you ask them that question, you, in this case, you would hear them say, yes, this bylaw is a vast improvement over the existing bylaw in terms of, as you already know, because you've already said you're using it and how much easier it is to use. But I think in general, when you send out a bylaw or any kind of regulatory document, say, can you review this to see if, if you see any red flags or any problems, what you're going to get back are red flags and problems.
Okay, Bob Ritchie?
Yeah, ju- just to, to respond to Jim's comment. When I read the comments of the attorneys, if it were a positive pat on the back, I'd probably skip right over and go to the stuff that is a concern. That if it's a concern, we can need to explain it so that there's clarity or if it's a concern that has validity, that we address it substantively. So, I'm not unhappy with critical comments. In fact, that's what I was hoping that we would get so that we would have something to work on.
Thank you, both of you. That's exactly what I would have expected too, when we asked people to look at it. And Jim, if you want to hear something good, I know I said this before, Patty Johnson said she had skimmed over it and what a vast improvement it was for usability. And she was going to try to talk it up to town meeting members too. So, okay, I think unless anybody has anything else they want to, Charlotte?
I just have one more question. I wonder if before we send along these things officially to, to Bob and Bob to work on, are, will there be sift and sort so that the ones that really, the comments, a lot of what Tom read, for example, there are comments about changes they'd like to see in the bylaws. It's not about the accuracy of the recodification. Are we going to take out the phase two appropriate remarks so that the working group doesn't have to attend to them, only to attend to what we ask for, which is, did we accurately move things over?
So to answer your question twice, we've sent all this information to the Bobs already. At the same time, staff has been reviewing it. So Michaela has been going through and curating Laura Moynihan's comments in identifying those that appear to be under the realm of the recodification contract and those things that are phase two. But at the same time, if we're looking at phase two and putting together a list for phase two, all those comments are significant, just whether they signify it is been a bit, uh, been a time or, or, or later.
Bob Mitchell?
Hi, Charlotte. This is how I usually handle the situation because it's, it's a normal situation. You get comments back from drafts. And in this case, it's a little different because you got phase one and phase two. But I briefly started going through Attorney Moynihan's comments today and not unexpectedly, they fall into different categories. So some are in the category of there's, there's a correction, there's something that's in error in the existing bylaw. Some are characterized as maybe a preference for a different way to word something than it's worded now. Some were in the policy ring, which is clearly in a phase two. And some others that were kind of, you know, across those borders. Many of the comments were about existing language, not, not language that we were changing or new section. And so I normally take those comments and sort them into whatever categories make sense from just simple technical, quick changes to, at one end to the, to the other end of the spectrum of policy. And then work with the committee, the, the working group in this case. Because some of them, I think Bob and I can clearly say, we think this is a technical correction and we think this is a policy question. I think some of them, we would have to say, working group, what do you think about this comment? Do you want to change this or do you want to put this into phase two or whatnot? So, but we'll, we can create either a list or a matrix or something to help sort these and then keep track of what decisions get made as to fix it now or put it in phase two. And that way we'll have a tracking history. So when you get to phase two or if somebody asks questions at town meeting, we will have a tracking system of what we did with the comments we have received from the public.
That's a great help. Thank you.
You know, that's how we worked originally, Charlotte, so we could track back to our decisions too. Bob Ritchie?
Yeah, one of the, some of the comments that I saw point out that the language is confusing and to endorse the philosophy of Attorney Kirk, simplify, simplify, simplify is a desirable goal, but that's not a sign that is hanging on the walls of our state legislature who violate that principle in states. We are trying to write a bylaw that is consistent with the state law, which itself is so unsimple that trying to keep a correspondence between what we do for the town and the law that is written very poorly. No, no section of the general law is written more poorly than Chapter forty-eight, Section six. With hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of words with no punctuation. So unless we try to dissect it and express these things in the simple terms that Attorney Kirk and I both share as a goal, we ha- we have to struggle to be true to what the statute is saying. And I see suggested, and I looked at a couple of, uh, Ms. Moynihan's comments and also Attorney Kirk. And I agree with them that it would be better to say things in ways that deviate from the statute, but we try to stay faithful to the statute and sometimes the word choices are not a wide option for us. So I struggle mightily to maintain consistency with the statutes that largely govern what we do in zoning.
Thank you. I'm sure you included Bob Amen's comments in that you both received them, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I got Attorney Amen's some time ago. I frankly only had an hour before this meeting to look at Attorney Kirk's, but they were short enough for me to get a sense of some of the things that are concerned here. And these are, these are good topics to think about. And in, in the real world, it would be great if we could just call him up and say, you know, let, let's chat about this and let me explain why we wrote what we did and, and see if he agrees with us. Or if he said something that we ought to think about, you know, Bob and I say, hey, what do you think of that? That's, that's going to interfere with the integrity of what we've done. And that's a good suggestion. We'll probably come back to you and say, well, let's, let's do that.
But remember, we are constrained to just, to reorganize our current bylaws. We have constraints too.
Well, let me, let me just, let me just say this. When this comes to the Attorney General, it will be a substantive review. We brought a lot of stuff over from the existing bylaw, but we, as Bob indicated, we filled in the gaps and the blanks. If, if you took all the sections of the existing bylaw dealing with non-conformities, you could write them on a three by five card. But to do an adequate job of having the town equipped with a workable bylaw dealing with this topic, we had to flesh, put flesh on the bones and do it in a way which is consistent with state law. But at the same time, let the bylaw, you know, legislate locally. State statutes don't do zoning, the bylaws do. Bob and I frequently see the bylaw being silent on a, on, on an issue on which the state law clearly says, this is for the town to say, it's not for us. The statute basically says what you can't do, but that leaves a, a, a large palette on which to work. Then the town really needs to do that. So we've, we've made, just to take Article ten, we're, we're trying to give the town a workable set of provisions dealing with this topic. And to do that, we've had to add stuff that wasn't there in the existing bylaw, but that is entirely consistent with the purposes articulated by the bylaw and also the black letter of law of the state statute. So are these, these are not purely ministerial changes. They are significant ones. And the Attorney General will be looking at the entire packet. Every, every, every word. Every word of the document is up for review, because using the metric that they do, it is a substantive draft. So I sometimes get a little nervous when we overemphasize that it's merely moving stuff over, because it's much more than that. And Bob tried to explain.
Thank you for spreading that explanation, Bob. Bob Mitchell?
Just one other thing about the comments we've received, which are very helpful. But I think, given the number of comments and a couple that I've at least briefly looked at, I've looked at more than a couple, but a couple that popped up, I think it's likely that we, and when I say we, I mean the collective we, Bob and Bob and Tom and the working group and Frank, are probably going to ask a question back to the author of the comments to explain what they meant, or elaborate on what they're trying to say, or just, you know, give us more clarification about their point in terms of what they're suggesting to change. Because I don't think it's always 100% clear as to what they're exactly mean. But the working group, some of the comments were about things that Bob and I wouldn't even know about. Because as I mentioned, it was about existing language that's been in there a long time. There were some comments, well, why is this language written this way? Well, I don't know. The language has been in the bylaw for some number of decades. So I think those of you in the working group that have some history and Frank's history might be able to answer some of those questions that Bob and I can't as well.
True. Okay, shall we move on? Or Charlotte?
I just wanted to ask Bob Ritchie to identify or narrow down really what you said. The, to my knowledge, the only article in the recodified version now that really needed a lot of blanks filled in was the one dealing with nonconforming situations. Isn't that true?
Yeah, there was, the contract called us to, I think, Bob, three areas, right? Nonconformities being one, district being the third, or the other two?
So, you're right, Charles. The nonconforming section was the biggest section that needed substantive review and revision and rewriting. The other two sections we were asked to tackle, one was the uses. And the main goal there, which we accomplished, was to take the endless text listing of uses and move those into table. And that's what we did. And then the third topic that we were asked to tackle was the whole definition issue of the entire bylaw, and that had multiple aspects to it. Definitions scattered all over the place. Mystic definitions, definitions that were outdated. And how to better organize the definitions, so it would be easier for people to find them. So in the definition section, that's, a lot of the definitions have now been combined into the definitions chapter. And we did add, we tweaked some of the language. Some of that was because the new definitions reflect statutory language. As Bob was mentioning, we have to define things the same way the state does. We might have problems. We added some definitions that the working group and the staff said were missing, and yet you wanted in there. And of course, we reorganized them into clusters of the same topic.
And in addition, there were changes that we made in grammar and punctuation, which are substantive changes. Your effort was basically to take the existing law and give it full meaning and to eliminate ambiguity. By placing a comma where it needs to be, we put focus into the scope of the modifier. We've added sections to the general law that, I mean, to the bylaw that were compelled by changes in the state law. That's a substantive change. You take the legal consequences of properties that were built and without the benefit of a building permit, after 10 years, they become nonconforming uses. That's just a recent change. The old bylaw didn't have that. So we tried to, we tried to keep true to the to the purpose of bringing it over and staying as channeled as we could be to what the bylaw did. But we didn't ignore the necessity of making changes substantively that needed to be made. So I think we could mislead by saying that all we did was to renumber, reposition, retitle. It was more than that. And I wouldn't want people to be overly dependent on the ministerial nature of what we did.
You're absolutely right, Bob. And that's what Tom went into initially with his first summary as to what we did, too. So thank you for that clarification on it.
I think it makes it very clear, though, Pat, that when we have the opportunity to present it to town meeting, we're going to have to expand on those remarks and really clarify that we haven't added ideas or policies. If we did, they are from state statute. They're not preferences of the consultants that we hired or preferences of the working group. They're from state statute. That's the source of them. I just...
That also is in the summary that we've always given, that it had to be brought into conformity with state statutes.
Right. But as soon as you condense something down into a little phrase, it doesn't necessarily get conveyed from one mind to the next. It's good to have really expanded on it and brought it out clearly as much as you can.
That's, I'm also hoping that a good number of town meeting members are listening tonight to this discussion. They will get a much clearer picture of what went on with the whole task here that we have done. Anybody else? Paul?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell have done an outstanding job over the last two years or so. I think the document is far better than it was before. The trick now is to get a document to the select board and to get town meeting to approve it so it can go up to the Attorney General's office. But we can't begin to make the improvements to the bylaws until we have the framework approved. So this process is taking a long time, but we really got to get moving and get the document approved by town meeting.
So we'll have a reconvening of the working group sometime in mid-December. We'll have a continuation of this hearing to January 5th.
Did I hear a motion to that effect, Madam Chair?
No. Does there need to be one? Because I think these may be floating dates.
I believe the best practice is to have a motion to continue the hearing until January 5th.
All right, since I've got it all... Pardon?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Bob has seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Show of hands, please. Pam has left us for the moment, so the six of us present are all in favor. Okay? So, thank you. And thank both of you, Bobs, for everything you have done and continue to do. Good night.
One last thing, Madam Chair. I'm sending emails right now. So like I said, breakfast, if you don't have an email from me, give me a call and we'll get the information to you.
And Bob Mitchell, did you have another comment?
Well, I just had a question. This is a public hearing. Is it the case that no one has made any comments or wants to speak or anything like that?
That is correct. We have been monitoring the chat as we always do. There were no chat comments, other than mine to the body about who we're going to elevate. The only other comments we got received via email, as is the practice described in the planning board's meeting, that we receive emails six hours before the meeting to go on the agenda. We got Ed Kirk's yesterday. We got Laura Moynihan's last week. And as I'm seeing, I did forward Ed Kirk's comments to Bob, Bob and Frank, and I sent them on to Pat. But I didn't send her the rest of the board. So that's the thing I'm typing right now, basically saying, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought they had been sent to the whole board. I was wrong.
Well, sometimes when you got a short week, the week before, things get compressed. I can't hear you. You're on mute.
Oh, who? I'm not on mute.
Yep, Jim was on mute, I think he was saying...
Jim was on mute. Oh, okay. He's just shaking his head. Okay, thank you both.
I myself intentionally to stop from making negative comments and not being informed about this.
Sorry. But you were sent, Laura, so...
Yes, but not Kirk's.
Okay.
I think it was wrong to do that and then read them into the public record on so negative without even having a chance to understand them. I don't understand why our town planner is working against us.
Jim, stop now or mute yourself. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the planning board discussion. Thank you.
Are we done, the Bobs?
Yes.
Okay.
The Bobs are done. Frank is done.
Thank you, gents.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Night.
Good night. Okay, planning board discussion. We have the 40B referral letters to the ZBA. And Michaela has redone them. Since we've seen them, I believe we can also vote on them tonight if you choose to do so. Does anybody want to read this into the record, or do you want me to read it into the record?
You can read it. You have a lovely voice.
Okay. The first one is November, and the date is off. The day will be filled in, and presumably it will be tonight, so it would be December 1st, 2020. Project eligibility to Rebecca Anne Lane Falmouth, in quotes, Cardinal Place. Dear Noreen, the To Rebecca Anne Lane project was discussed at the 1110 Planning Board meeting following a site visit, and the board had the following comments and concerns regarding the project. The planning board stated that the proposed project is in line with what the planning board is looking for in an affordable housing project. The board members did discuss, though, that they would like to see the parking and all that pavement not be directly in front of the property. Also, the board wanted to see shared driveways as opposed to the larger parking areas as currently shown on the plans. The board felt moving the pavement and making shared driveways would help make the neighborhood appear more unified and cohesive. This would allow the proposed project to feel in line with the residential neighborhood across the street. Additionally, by pulling the buildings closer to the roadway and reconfiguring the pavement, this may allow for slightly larger backyards and added buffering for the houses behind the project. The board did note that they were very supportive of the fact that all of the units would be rental and would mean that all of the units would be eligible to go on the town's SHI. The board also noted that the conditions for the location as stated in the Falmouth Housing Production Plan, HPP, are met with this location. The board felt its proximity to a supermarket, transportation, other amenities that are of interest to residents in town, as well as being in a neighborhood, all comported with the approved HPP. Are there any comments to this letter? And everything that is in it? Paul?
You prefer to read the last comment about the character? The developer?
No, no, no. You're on the wrong one. It's the other one, Cardinal Place, to Rebecca Anne Lane. Charlotte?
The letter that you read reflects what the board had to say. It's a good letter.
Very good.
Okay, if you, excuse me, if you wish to vote it tonight, we can do so, I think, because we essentially had the same letter previously.
I think we can vote it tonight.
I move to send it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, please raise your hands in support. Okay, so, what, seven of us voted in support of this letter?
If I may, Madam Chair, for the record, both of those letters are Michaela's work. She took the lead and wrote those from the planning board's comments in a review of previous meeting.
Right.
You did a good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, do you wish to have me read it, or somebody else want to read this one? Well, since everybody's jumping to do it, again, the date on it will have to be changed to December 1st. Regarding project eligibility, Zero Percival Road, Falmouth, in quotes, Rosewood. Dear Noreen, the Zero Percival Road project was discussed at the 1110 Planning Board meeting following a site visit, and the board had the following comments and concerns regarding the project. The planning board stated that although the developer is going to make improvements over Percival Road and the town does need affordable housing, the planning board did not feel that the proposed density was in line with the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding area. The proposed 16 lots are too dense and would result in too many trees needing to be cut down for the area. Due to the proposed density, the developer would need to strip the land of numerous trees. As such, the board would like to see a planting plan to ensure there is a vegetated buffering for the neighboring houses. Additionally, due to the roadway length with no lighting, the board would like to see lighting added to the roadway to make it safe. The board also discussed the need for added sidewalks for safer pedestrian travel. The board discussed that the road is basically a one-way street. The road ends in a very narrow, small manner, and the access is poor. Cars are unable to pass by each other on the current street with existing conditions as they are. The board felt adding 16 units to an essentially one-way street would only further crowd the road. The planning board also felt that if the zoning board of appeals is going to make a connection, if at all, through harness drive, then it should be an emergency-only access point. The connection should have a gate across it for emergency vehicles only and not be utilized as a common access for people because of the existence of the three daycare facilities on the road with 30-plus young people in attendance. Lastly, the board also noted that the conditions for the location as stated in the Falmouth Housing Production Plan, HPP, are not met with this location. The board stated it did not meet the plan in regards to serviceability, transportation and location. They felt that it was too far from amenities such as shopping centers, schools, library, or other points of interest to exist without a car, and that they would prefer to see 40B applications that do coincide and align with the approved HPP. The board stated, while they felt the development may not be in line with the character of the area, they did state the developer is a local developer with upstanding character. Are there any comments in regard to this letter? Charlotte?
A point was made, the last time we were looking at the letter, two points. One, the initial, the opening statement in the original letter that the board disagreed with, saying that we supported this project. And that statement has been taken out, which is good, because we don't support the project. But a statement saying we don't support the project hasn't been added. I don't know whether it's common practice to add that, but it might make it stronger. Second point, one missing now, still from what we've written, what's written there, is the developer proposes to widen the road in front of the 16 houses. But still, the entrance at either end would be only one-way traffic. So they're narrow, squeeze entrances and exits, which presents a safety problem. And we had named that as a safety problem. And I think that it should be in the letter and be labeled a safety problem.
Does everybody else agree?
Yeah.
Yep.
Bob, you had your hand up.
Yeah, there was a comment made when we were discussing this about subdevelopments going into farm fields and all that. And we've been doing it since The Pilgrims and all that. But I look at it as, this really isn't a good place to put a 40B development. And it's putting 40Bs in places like this that give 40Bs a bad name. It makes it harder for other 40Bs to be built where they should be built. That's my comment.
Do you want to have that comment added into the letter?
I don't know. I couldn't word it to add it to the letter, but that's just how I feel.
That's how you feel.
My vote is not going to be in the affirmative. I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay, Jim?
You know, sometimes I... You know, sometimes I think we ought to take the language.
Jim, and then you said, Jim.
I agree with the whole letter except the end. I personally don't even remember who the contractor is, and I just wanted to, I want to question other board members if they even remember who it is, and also point out that many people get things approved and flip them, and the guy at buildings totally different. So, I just, I'm a little concerned about putting weight on, oh, we really like the person that's doing this, not the comment. Everything else is good.
So, you'd like to see that last statement taken out, Jim?
Well, does it, do all the board members know who it was?
No.
I don't.
John does.
Yes, it's Ed Montero.
Well, I didn't realize that Ed's a good guy, but I just didn't put any weight on that, because most of the time I see people flip these things.
So, do you want to say Ed Montero's a good guy?
Yes, of course.
Okay, Pam?
Sometimes I think when we include some of these letters, we ought to bring in the wording from the state about the location of a 40B, and what makes a good location, because we talk about it. But this doesn't meet, I don't think, just about any of the criteria. So...
Well, it doesn't meet the criteria of our housing production plan.
No, nor does it meet the state criteria of a walkable, accessible to library, school, public transportation, work. There are a whole series of criteria, and this does not meet those criteria.
Would you like to see that added?
I would. I mean, I think that should be standard in any response we make, you know, or a checkoff. Has this met the following criteria?
Okay, and Paul?
Yeah, I, I have a comment, as Jim does, on the last paragraph. I understand why it's there. We've established in our discussion that Mr. Montero is a very good contractor in the area, but I'd be concerned with us making a recommendation on anyone to open up a potential legal situation for us down the road.
Okay, so you want to see the last line taken out?
Sorry?
You want to see the last statement taken out about the developer, you and Jim?
And the, the planning board. We've established who the character, who he is, Mr. Montero, and he's fine. No one's disagreeing with that, but to put it in a document that we recommend him, I don't think is where we want to go with this.
I think you're right.
Okay, so three of you definitely want to see that taken out.
I do.
John?
Tom, do you know if this development, this proposed development, has received their site approval letter from, from Mass Housing?
Yes, sir. The, the process is, they can't file for a 40B. We can't make these comments until after the site approval letter.
So, how do you think they get, how do you think they get a site approval letter if they don't meet any of the criteria?
I will tell you that Mass Housing's mission is to create affordable housing, and they realize under 40B that you can waive all the local zoning regulations. So, any local regulation can be waived by the 40B and by the developer. That's the magic of 40B, as you know. You get to waive all the local regulations by creating 25% of those affordable units, and a density that's typically higher, and possibly in a location that's not zoned for that. There's a great number of towns that have set aside as a land use practice, land for industrial zoning, but industry hasn't come to places, so there's a great number of 40Bs that wind up in industrial parks and places like that. So, the location and the manner of 40Bs are not of our making, they're of the state's making, and of the applicant's making.
All right, thank you.
So, in summary, then, of what I'm hearing, and please correct me, or would you like to tell what you heard, Michaela, as far as the changes that the board wishes to be put in here?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. So, I am going to strike the last sentence regarding the character of the developer. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I will definitively add in the first sentence that the board is not in agreement with the project. I apologize, as I think before, I didn't hear that there was a definitive, we wanted it stated, you're not in agreement. So, I can add that language in, that's not a problem. The developer proposes to widen the road, but the entrances, and I'll work on the language, so bear with me momentarily, but, but the entrance on either end will still be a one-way, and therefore is a safety issue.
Correct.
And then, in addition to the location...
Sheila, I'm not, it's not actually a one-way, but functionally, it's a one-way, because it's so narrow.
Okay.
One lane is what you're talking about.
Yes, one lane. Because it's what, 10, 12 feet wide, something like that?
I've changed way to lane and added functionally. And then, in addition to the location not meeting the Falmouth Housing Production Plan, it does not meet, the location did not meet the state's requirements for a location for a 40B development.
Yep, that is what you wanted, Pam, right? And I think that's valuable to put in there, too. I agree with that, too. Okay, so, on this one, we will see it at our next meeting.
Madam Chairman, I believe someone, Jim Fox has a comment.
Okay, Jim?
I also think it doesn't meet a local comprehensive plan, which we did not comment on, but I believe we should every time we look at one of these.
Yeah, it doesn't. Which supports the HPP. John?
Two, two comments. One is, I don't understand how it cannot meet the state's guidelines, yet they get a site approval letter. That's a little confusing to me, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve that language. And secondly, I am in support of this development. I don't know if we're going to put it down as everyone is not in support of, but I am totally in support of approving this 40B development.
Well, in this case, I don't know, we've never done this before, when we've done a referral letter, but Bob says he's going to abstain. You're completely in support, and I...
I think we have, Madam Chair, a second. I believe in a previous letter, we have stated the board, we essentially said the board's actions were essentially a 6-0-1 vote. So, we've done that.
I, I think, I think we just said it was not a unanimous vote. I don't know if we counted, but yeah, I believe we just said it was not unanimous, but the majority of the board did not support the project. So, if that's okay with the board, I can put something like that in the letter, if that's preferable.
I think that would be terrific. I like that.
Okay. And so, we'll see that again on December 8th. Charlotte?
Just a general comment. One, I want to thank Michaela. I think that she did take down all the things, the changes that we wanted to make. I'd like to make a general observation about 40B support letters emanating from the planning board. If they reach to begin really clearly with, the planning board voted whatever, you know, two to five, whatever, to support this program with the following concerns, without any concerns, or voted not to support this program for the following reasons. So that the initial sentence sets you up for whatever list of concerns you might have, and makes it very clear what our position is, and how many of us supported it.
But that also presupposes, when we have the decision in front of us, we already know how everybody's going to vote, Charlotte. And we don't necessarily know how everybody's going to vote. Tonight, maybe we do.
Well, tonight, we're not voting, but, right, but at the point that the letter is leaving the office, and has a stamp on it, that information is known.
It is.
Right. We could trust the office to accurately report the vote.
I think we could, yes. Okay, Cam?
I'm not sure how much weight the planning board approval or disapproval really carries. I don't think we really have, we really have no authority. This is really the ZBA, and we just make a recommendation to them. So, I don't think we need to overthink it.
No, we don't, but it's good to have us clearly on record of what we're thinking. We take the time to go make a site visit. We take the time to discuss it. We ought to be able to present a clear statement of what we think.
And I do think the zoning board of appeals will take our recommendation into account. Okay. We'll see this again on December 8. There, we do not have correspondence on this agenda. There is a note that came in from Trish Favuli, which we can put on the agenda under correspondence, and it is how the assessors department records can and cannot be used. She just wants to make absolutely sure, and we will put that on the next, on the December 8th agenda, so that it can be read into the record, so that people who are listening will also understand on that. Okay? Is there anything else? Because that's all that's on the agenda. So, that being the case, 7:49. But Bob?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.